The board, we're now coming in order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotor, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, we would be led today in prayer by Bishop James Holloway of Solomon's Temple Church, and I don't know about you, but I'm so honored to have Bishop Holloway lead us in this prayer today. Bishop Holloway?
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, President, and thank you, the people of God. So glad to see you here this morning, and we just come because we understand business is so important, but we need God's guidance to give us the wisdom and the knowledge in making decisions. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you, God, for this day you have made, and we rejoice in it, and we're glad in it, because God, you're the God of wisdom, the God of knowledge, and the God of understanding. We say, "Thank you, God, for helping us in this city, and give down, God, the people understanding how to serve and serve with a spirit of excellence." We said, "Lord, thank you for the day that the outcome will be wonderful, everything going to be done well according to order, and we give you praise and glory for it now. Touch our hearts and our minds, and we work together in Jesus' name. Amen."
Let's give Bishop a round of applause, thank him for coming out today, open us up in prayer. They're doing some great things at Solomon's Temple, and I want to just thank them for that. Bishop also has a couple of his, one of the deacons and ministers with him, Deacon Walter Allen, Deacon Walter Allen, let's give him a round of applause, and Minister Timothy Davis, thank you also for coming out. With that, we'll take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Alderman from the eighteenth, would you like to make the motion for our courtesy resolution calendar?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the courtesy resolution calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-second, Alderman from the eighteenth, would you like to proceed? And also the members of the caucus, Alderman from the second, somebody, Alderman from the second, Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
as is our tradition, we recognize significant achievers and organizations in the African-American community that have made contributions to the betterment of St. Louis, our area, and the nation as a whole. Black History Month was created by Cardigi Woodson and an association that he created called the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. Cardigi Woodson founded Black History Month in 1926 primarily because of the reason that African-American history had been left out of the instructional manuals of public schools, out of universities, and generally, the idea was is that Africans had no history worth teaching or had made no contributions to the world in such a manner that it has made an important impact. Well, Cardigi Woodson, as a young man, was very clear that it could not have been the case, because all of world history or human history begins on the continent of Africa. So how could it have been that Africans and their descendants have made no significant contributions? So in 1926, he launched what was called then Negro History Week, which was the third week of February, because February was the month that Frederick Douglass was born in, as well as Abraham Lincoln, two significant individuals in the justice cause for African-Americans. The association since that day has created a theme for each Black History Month. It grew to Black History Month during the movements of the sixties and was changed from Negro History Week to Black History Month, as we know it today. This year's theme is African-Americans in Times of War. Not only does the theme talk about African-Americans and our contribution to the world wars that America has found itself in, but the association was also pushing forward the idea that the war that African-Americans have waged for justice and equality and for the ending of discrimination in America, period, would also be a part of this theme for 2018. And so our African-American Automatic Caucus, in its wisdom, determined to recognize this year the various organizations in our community who have fought for justice and have fought for equality and cultural self-determination for African-Americans specifically, but for justice in general in St. Louis and America. St. Louis has a long history of social activisms from the African-American community. Until 1865, the major issue for the African-American community was emancipation, freedom from slavery. We must keep in mind that this whole thing of slavery was a worldwide phenomenon, a part of colonialization from European powers. So the colonialization of Africa ended or also culminated in the slavery of captives brought here to the United States. In this area, the first major grouping of Africans were brought in 1720 by the man, by the man by the name of Philippe Renault, who brought 500 Africans up the Mississippi into this area to work what they called then in the coal mines. They say there was so much coal around in St. Louis, you could just pick it up off the ground. And so then, he brought them here, 500, coming off of, from the city of Santo Domingo, the island of Haiti, and brought up the Mississippi, 1720. Well, since that time, many things have happened in St. Louis, and because the history is not taught, we don't realize it, that St. Louis had formed one of the largest abolitionist organizations in the history of the country. They were called the Knights of Liberty and the Daughters of Tabor, organized by the man and his wife, Moses Dixon, and his, and his, Moses Dixon, the man and his wife, they called her Mother Dixon, formed right here in St. Louis at Seventh and Locust Street, what is now the old Dillard's. In their home, it was a secret organization. Their plan was to organize and to train African-Americans to fight for their freedom. They were actually had planned to invade the city of Atlanta in 1850 using St. Louis as the takeoff point. These are black women and men. At that time, Moses Dixon had a vision. His vision was that America was going to fall into a civil war, so instead of attacking Atlanta, they determined to wait. And when Lincoln finally decided that the North needed African-Americans in the war to win, what they got were 47,000 already trained black women and men ready to fight for freedom. According to W.E.B. Du Bois, that is what won the Civil War for the, for the North, not Lincoln, but these 47,000 already trained Africans ready to fight on behalf of freedom. Right here in St. Louis was formed the Missouri Equal Rights League in October of 1865. They fought for voting rights, equality for black, for women, education, and lobbied in the Missouri Legislature. There was also formed here in St. Louis the Colored Refugee Relief Board in January 1879, formed by a Moses Dixon, Charlton Tandy, who Tandy Park is named after, and James Milton Turner, who became the first black ambassador to any country here in the United States. He was an ambassador to Haiti, right here in St. Louis, held in bondage and formed these organizations. The First Freedom Fair was held here in 1868 at what was then called the Philharmonic Hall at Fourth and Washington Street, where they had information available and people ready to take in African-Americans who were just being freed and were looking for places to stay. Of course, we know about the Freedom Schools that were held on the Mississippi River by the Meachams during the 1840s to ensure that black folks could learn how to read, and in 1879, the Colored Immigration Aid Society was created by African-Americans in this city to help those people just brought out abundance to be able to find homes, to have a place to live, to be able to find jobs. These were other African-Americans helping African-Americans hand by hand, and these are the parts of history that we're not told about. And so then, the struggle for justice and equality, which is this theme for Black History Month 2018, is what we want to highlight here today through these various organizations that have continued a struggle. One of our elders, Francis Johnigan, has taught us that we're not the beginning, we're not the end, we are the continuance, that we did not begin this struggle, we will not end this struggle most likely, but we are here to make a contribution during our lifetimes, and each one of these organizations have done this. It is our honor to recognize the NAACP formed in St. Louis in 1909. I just have to speak about one other critical thing. At the end of slavery, it was clear what our work was during slavery. That was the complete freedom and emancipation of people of color in America and cultural self-determination. Once slavery ended, we had a critical question to answer. What do we do? Do we return back to the continent of Africa? Do we stay here and try to develop independent black states? Do we create independent cities? Do we try to integrate into a country that seemed like they didn't want to have anything to do with us whatsoever? Do we work for our civil rights? Do we try to create independent societies? All of these became questions that as a community of people, we had to answer, and each one of those answers became a movement unto itself. And so they all had at their heart the equality and the emancipation and justice and the cultural self-determination of a people who had been colonized and enslaved. They all had that as their emphasis and in their spirit, but each took a different direction, which I just have to quote this song from Sly Stone. He says, it's called "A Family Affair," and he explained it to a, to a black female, a white female moderator. She couldn't understand. What do you mean by "it's a family affair"? He said, "The song says, 'One child grows up to be somebody who just loves to learn. Another child grows up to be somebody who just loves to burn. Mom loves the both of them. You see, it's in the blood. Both kids are good to mom. Blood is thicker than the mud.'" His point was, the child who loves to learn is who people call Martin Luther King. The child who loves to burn was Malcolm X. The black community loved them both, because they represented those various different approaches that we felt we needed to take towards our liberation and our culture self-determination. And so Sly Stone said to her, "Baby, you ain't going to understand it, because it's a family affair." And so then many people outside of our community say, "Well, how could you like a Malcolm X? How could you like a Martin Luther King at the same time? Weren't they diametrically opposed?" They still come from us. "Mom loves the both of them. You see, it's in the blood. Blood's thicker than mud. It's a family affair." And so these organizations that we'd like to recognize today, so these organizations that we'd like to recognize today, sometimes may seem diametrically opposed to everybody else, but it's a family affair. Blood's thicker than the mud. They belong to us. And so that's why we don't stand out talking bad about each other, because we had to make a critical decision at 1865. What direction do we take? Do we stay? Do we leave? Do we, do we fight for independence? Many of us went and created independent cities like Nicodinas, Kansas. Many of us ran into the Everglades and stayed with the Seminoles. A U.S. general in 1930s who went in to try to bring the Seminoles out, well, most of us familiar with the Seminole Indians in Florida. He came back in his report, he said, "You know, the war with the Seminoles is not a war with the Indians, this is a war with a bunch of black folks up there," who had run into freedom. That's not unusual. In Jamaica, those Africans who ran into freedom created independent society called Maroon Societies. In Brazil, they were called the Kilombos. In the United States, we call them breakaway societies or our own communities. The same theme, the same aspiration for cultural self-determination and our right to be who we are in the world and not have to explain it to anybody. So today, we come in our full African attire, happy to be who we are and to recognize these organizations who have continued a struggle that started when humanity first began to fight itself, knowing that humanity, according to our historians, began, the first Homo sapiens walked this earth some 350,000 years ago in the area of Tanzania. We have to say that because we have someone here from Tanzania. In the area, in a north-south axis from Tanzania into Ethiopia, humanity began. And so then, to keep African-American history from everybody is to deny all humans an understanding of their humanity. And so then, we recognize here today several organizations. The NAACP that was founded in 1909. We'd also like to recognize this year the Urban League founded in 1918 here in St. Louis, correct? Yes, one year after the East St. Louis Race Riot, the Urban League was founded, to help give relief to the survivors of the East St. Louis Race Riot, of which my family is one. We'd like to also recognize CORE, our representative from CORE is here, and we will bring you each up and give you your resolutions. We'd like to recognize one of them, the more, each in its time was considered a radical organization. I mean, the NAACP was considered, oh, they have to be some crazy Negroes doing their business when they were founded back in 1909. OBS founded in 1980, and then the Universal African Peoples Organization, who point out that their founding was in 1987, but they actually grew out of the Universal Negro Improvement Association that was created by Marcus Garvey. They are continuation of that movement with a new name, recognizing the activities of this era. And so then, this year, our caucus wanted to recognize these organizations, because the theme for Black History Month this year is African-Americans in Times of War, and these are some of our warrior organizations, some of our soldiers who have worked on our behalf. Some are not with us, and we don't say they have fallen, they have ascended because of their work on our behalf. They have gone into spirit on our behalf and are fighting even harder there. So we call their names when we go out on the picket line, or we call their names when we do our work. And so then, we first would like to call up just to give them their resolution. Going back to the oldest of the organizations, I understand that our representative from the, from the NAACP is not here. Adolphus Pruitt sent a message. He had a death in the family. His father passed, and so he will not be able to be here today, those who did not know. It just, that just happened this morning. So we will hold the resolution, but we do have one for the NAACP founded in St. Louis, I believe in 1909, to ensure equality and justice for African-Americans. Some people struggle with the name, but in 1909, we were called all kind of stuff. Negro was kind of good compared to what we had been called at the time. We'd next like to recognize the Urban...
Before we do this ceremony, let's give Terry a round of applause.
I didn't pay him to do that. Our next organization would be the Urban League. Where's our representation? We have our own Michael McMillan here, who is the director of the Urban League. There's several others with him. I'm sure you know most of those that are with him. Reddick Hudson, and Darrell Jones. Pardon me, but when you get up here, everything goes out your mind. The next organization we'd like to recognize is Congress of Racial Equality. Any of our representatives?
Mr. Lofton.
Mr. Lofton, there he is. Founded here in 1948. It is upon their shoulders that we stand, and so we wanted to recognize through this resolution their hard work on our behalf. Next, we'd like to recognize the Organization of Black Struggle. I believe we have Jamala Rogers and one other here. An organization unashamed to say black.
All right.
You know, if we want to have a world that's truly pluralistic, we have to ask the question, why do we have to always look like Europe? It's our pleasure. We have Tempest, Tuttle, Tuggle, and Kendrewa Tatum also with us from OBS. I've already introduced Jamala Rogers. And then the Universal African Peoples Organization with Zaki Beruti and Coffey Wright, and apparently a host of others. And so these are the organizations who have worked in love and struggled on our behalf throughout the decades that have helped bring us this far. If they had not been, we would not be where we are today. We thank them for their hard work on behalf of our community and recognize that when we fight for justice, even justice anywhere, we improve the condition of everybody every place else. And so then, we wanted to recognize your discipline, dedication, and sacrifice and achievement on behalf of our community, both black, white, and everything else in this city, that your work has helped make this a better place to work and live. And though sometimes your voices, we don't always want to hear the way you bring it, we're happy that you say what you say, when you say it, because you keep things on task and on point. We say, "Thank you very much for your work on behalf of our communities." Let's give them a hand. We'd like to take a photo. Can we take it over here? You want, okay, you want us all to go to that side? Let's see this happen. We all want to switch to this side so we can take a picture. Louis Reed, Mr. President? Come on over. You need to come up here with us. You tall. You got to come up here with us. You tall.
That we put all these in bank? It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify, or stand aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that and have the sergeant-at-arms create another copy of the resolutions all in bank.
So noted.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have one other presentation for this portion of our activities, and that is to an individual. Our caucus this year saw that, yes, there are groups and organizations, but there's an individual that we know that has worked diligently in our community, but oftentimes has not been lifted up. And so we wanted to lift that person up this year for Black History Month, and that is our own representative Louis Ford, whose history of love and struggle on our behalf has also improved the level of life in this community. We'd like to call up the Alderman from the 22nd, who has the resolution, and will say a few words about it.
Good morning, everybody. It is with great pleasure that we present this to Louis Ford, that is old saying that goes, "Give them their flowers while they're still here." I've had a personal relationship and have love and admiration for the Ford family. I've had a chance to work with the honorable representative Louis Ford, his wife, who was the committee woman, and our former esteemed colleague, April Ford Griffin, and just a phenomenal family that has done a great for the city of St. Louis. And it's my pleasure to read the resolution and talk about this unsung hero. And it goes like this, "Whereas Louis H. Ford, a foot soldier for justice, arrested many times for protesting racial injustice in employment and voting rights of blacks in St. Louis and across this country; and whereas Louis H. Ford was born on March 12, 1935, in Stampley, Mississippi, to Clay Ford and Vera White. Louis spent early childhood in Chicago with his family and sister Pat DeZavio. He later came to St. Louis with his mother and grandmother, attended Washington School and Douglas High School. And whereas Louis accepted Christ under Reverend Norman Williams Jr. and served on the Prince of Peace Trustee Board for many years, he joined the Order of Masons, Prince Hall, traveling throughout the 32nd degree, contributing many volunteer hours to travel to charitable causes throughout the city of St. Louis. And whereas growing up, Louis always demonstrated desire to be a business owner. He had confidence and the ability to be a leader and minority business owner. He desired to be part of the change that was coming to our St. Louis community. Louis established L&amp;H Ford Exterminators, a pest control company that became one of the best in St. Louis. His company provided training and employment for neighborhood residents. And whereas Louis Ford became a member of the Congress of Racial Equality, an African-American civil rights organization that played a pivotal role for African-Americans in the civil rights movement. He traveled with CORE to protest racial injustice at the World's Fair in New York, also traveled to Mississippi protesting and demonstrating for equal rights and jobs and voting rights. And whereas in 1963, Louis was arrested during the Jefferson Banks demonstration, he laid down on the floor in front of the doors of the Jefferson Bank located at Jefferson and Washington to show his disdain for their discriminatory employment policies and practices of refusing to hire African-Americans. Louis was sentenced to serve 365 days in jail for his participation. And whereas Louis has cemented his name in the history books for his role in the Jefferson Bank demonstration, and his photo is currently displayed alongside many others in the African-American Freedom Struggle in St. Louis Civil Rights Exhibit at the Missouri History Museum. Whereas Louis was elected state representative of the 58th district and served his community in that capacity for 20 years. He also served as Fifth Ward Committee Man for 30 years. During his tenure, Louis proudly served with Jordan Chambers, Senator Jett Banks, Senator... John Bass, and Congressman Lacy Clay. Louis was responsible for getting his family elected political office. With his guidance and support, Ida M. Ford was chosen as Fifth Ward Committee Woman, April Ford Griffin was elected Fifth Ward Alder Woman, and Anthony Walker, state representative for the 58th district. And now whereas Louis Ford's commitment to community service and dedication to others has had a positive impact in our great St. Louis community, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we happily pause in our deliberations to recognize Louis H. Ford for his many years of service to this city. And by adoption of this resolution, we wish to join him and others in honoring him, and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the permanent rolls of this board and to prepare a commemorative copy of this resolution to the end, that it may be presented to our honorary at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Ladies and gentlemen, our Honorable Louis Ford.
I want to thank you for being so kind and being such a friend for what, 30 years, to myself and my family. And I want to thank you for being just a good friend to the community. That's what we all hear about is being friendly towards our community that we represent. And for many years, I served with the Jordan Chambers, Leroy Tashfred weather on the dark side. We had to carry that ball. Wasn't easy, but I remember the Jerry Hadens and all those guys as well. And listen, we could be a great city, a great, great city. We got good leadership here now, and we could take that leadership, really, and put it to work and make St. Louis a better city than what we are and a prouder city. Black and white could work together, and I'm proud of my daughter. She's a part of the city administration now, and she's working hard along with you all. And hopefully, one day, we could say St. Louis was our best, and thank you.
Do we... We have other members who may wish to make a comment? Alderman?
The Ford family is truly an entity that has been supportive in this city, in this region for a long time. My sister was their next door neighbor, and they took care of my sister. They watched out after her, got our attention that we needed to be more involved with what happens in politics. The wonderful April Ford, as a young alderperson, she had some challenges in that ward, but I watched her grow into her position. I watched her achieve many things. And so I look at them and I look at how they make sure that they're a part of the good, not necessarily always being cantankerous. I also know that on our behalf in that State House, Louis Ford was a part of that powerful team that was there, and they would go in quietly and negotiate on behalf of the city of St. Louis. And the next thing you knew, all these resources were coming to us. But they were studious, they were always present, and they knew their job. You see, that's the key to it. You don't need to necessarily be flashy, but you need to be knowledgeable. And so I appreciate all the years that that family has dedicated and is still providing to the city of St. Louis. So on behalf of me and many others, I just want to say thank you.
I sure will, Sam. I'll speak for you and most of us. I just want to say thanks to our state representative Louis Ford. As a youngster growing up in the 60s and 70s, he was a trailblazer, and I learned a lot from him, got a lot of, you know, political advice in working with the community. He also served with my father in the state representative house, and believe it or not, I know I don't look that old, but I was also down at the Jefferson Bank protests in 1963, myself, me and now who is the congressman of the first district. So again, I just want to thank him for all the service that he's given us, and we appreciate his leadership. Thank you so much, Honorable Louis Ford. Thank you.
I would just like to stand before you and thank the Honorable Louis Ford. I don't know if many people know the history of our families. Many, many years ago, my brother was just a student at the Capitol, and Louis took him up under his wing, and because of that, I stepped into politics, other members of my family did. So that's a testament to his leadership and his commitment to our city, and I'm grateful to have been around when he has been around and his... My predecessor was his daughter, and I mean, it's just a commitment to our community and what we've been able to accomplish with good leadership. So I thank you for all that you've done, and I'm forever grateful for it. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't tell you, thank you, Lou, for all that you've done for this city and your beautiful daughter, April. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Thank you, sir, for being here. I was born in 87. I heard a lot about what Louis Ford did and actually saw a lot of things that April Ford Griffin did and went to school with her daughter, so I know what type of character runs in the family, though. A very good, would I say, stock of people. So I want to appreciate all of the stories that I've heard of all the great things that you all have done, the accomplishments that you all have made for us to be able to be where we are right now. So thank you all very much, and I wish you the best.
Tell you, I have to just, you know, thank Lou and also to all the awardees today in recognition for the great job that you continue to do in the city of St. Louis. You know, our Declaration of Independence, in that second paragraph, they talk about how it's important for people to engage in government if indeed you want life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness to represent what you... what your values are. So each and every one of the organizations that are out there working each and every day, a lot of times with a lot of personal sacrifice, you forego salaries and everything else to try to find justice. So I want to just thank you. As a father of four and a resident of the city of St. Louis in the United States of America, I have to tell you, thank you all individually. Let's give them all one more big round of applause. It goes without saying, the work that Louis Ford and his daughter, April, have done for the city. Louis, you know what you've done with me ever since the day I've been in politics. The first campaign I ever worked on was for Bosley, and then soon after that, ran into and met Lou as a guy that, you know, I was just trying to get involved and trying to help and give back. But Lou, you have done some magnificent things, and a lot of things that you've done, a lot of people won't even ever even know, because you didn't do it for any glory or just to be noticed for it. You did it because it was the right thing to do. You went to jail because it was the right thing to do, because that's what you were living for and you wanted to give back. And all of us have benefited from it. Myself and my family benefited from it directly because his daughter, April Ford Griffin, ran my campaign to become the first African-American president of the Board of Aldermen elected in the history of the city of St. Louis. And my mother used to always tell me, you know, you know that religious song, "Whose side are you leaning on?" My mother would always tell you, "Whose shoulders are you standing on?" And it's important for us to understand whose shoulders we're standing on. So I stand up here today, and I know that the shoulders I stand on are the shoulders of Louis Ford and a lot of the organizations and people who came before us that made the difference, that had the sacrifices, right? And it's important for us to remember that, because in the world we live in today, many times, people forget that they are actually standing on someone else's shoulders. And we're standing on other people's shoulders. So I want to just thank Louis Ford, April Ford, and all the awardees. Let's give Louis Ford one more big round of applause and congratulations. Alderman from the 23rd.
I just wanted to mention that Lou kind of works across the city, because I know a young Italian guy, me, who has many lunches with Lou, and he'd give me advice when I seemed to be getting a little off the chart, you know, a little bit. He'll sit down and say, "Come meet me over at Joey B's," and he'll try to calm me down and give me some advice, which I listen to. So he does work across the city, and Lou, you know, I appreciate you.
Alderman from 14th.
Mr. President, I rise in support of these resolutions. Having been a lifelong resident of the city of St. Louis, I walk beside this history and know this history, and it is rich and it has enriched all of our lives. And I want to especially thank Mr. Ford for his dedication to our city and for bringing about the changes he... that, along with these other organizations, that we now are feeling and we're able to put things into action. Thank you.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Louis Ford, we probably go back over 40 years. I actually met Louis through Tom Villa and Donna Jefferson's city days, and Lou knew my wife's family really well, so we had a good relationship for a long time. And I will tell you, he was very serious when he worked on bills, because every bill he introduced or got passed was for the good of the city and the state. But Louis, you've always been a friend of mine, and I learned never to tell him no about parking in front when I used to work in a circle. Two people when I pulled up to park in a circle was Louis Ford and late Senator Jett Banks. "Could you squeeze me in?" They kind of put you on the spot. Yeah, right here, leave the keys. But Louis, you've been a friend of mine for years, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate everything you've done for me. Thank you.
Having been the second-longest-tenured member of the Board of Aldermen, I didn't say the eldest, I said the second-longest-tenured Alderman here at the Board of Aldermen, because I am not the oldest member of the Board of Aldermen. It pleases me to see that this year, that all of you all are sitting there listening. I've had the opportunity, or the unfortunate opportunity at times, to be here that when we had African History Month, we were talking to one person sitting out there, that they didn't see the significance, others did not see the significance of us all hearing and learning these lessons here today. And so then, I just want to extend our appreciation to you for sitting and listening and showing comprehension and understanding here today. Perhaps St. Louis is headed in a much better direction. We can see that hopefully by your being here. So I'd like to say to you, thank you. In Swahili, we'd say asante sana, thank you very much. We stand up on the shoulders of those who came before us, because you see, it's in the blood, to remind you that all of these different organizations and their approaches come from our community, and our community loves them all. There's a proverb, an African proverb, that says, "The most beautiful and beneficial acts that I can do, that make things better, that show sacrifice, are those acts that only I know I have done." That's what Representative Louis Ford represents to us, one who makes a beautiful act and doesn't have to sing the song that he did it, who was able to sacrifice and show dedication on our behalf despite the odds, because it was the just and right thing to do. And so then, we as a caucus, and thankfully you as a Board of Aldermen, we have all joined in and recognizing such a spirit, because if it can exist in him, we can find it in ourselves and hopefully find it in future generations. And so then in 2018, we recognized Black History Month and its theme, African Americans in Times of War, recognizing that the real struggle is the one for justice and equality and cultural self-determination for a people who had been brought as captives. Actually, there were three waves of Africans to the United States. The first was during the area of the time period of Nubia, the second time during the time period of Mali, the third time, we came in chains as a part of colonialism. And so our history here in America actually predates Africans coming to America, actually predates that of Europe. But those are the stories that we're now told, those are the reasons why we need to have African History Month, so that we can, or Black History Month, we can raise up the truth about history and we all can be made better. It is our gratitude to you here today that we've been able to do this. Are there any other words from members of the caucus? Yes, ma'am? We're ready at this point.
We have been so attentive today, and so as we close out this recognition ceremony, we've been offered a small, quick performance from Joel P. King, director of JPEC Productions, located in the Zach in residency with his theater company. I think I had sent out something this weekend. He's having the performance and production of The Meeting Place, which was a conversation and meeting between Malcolm X and Martin Luther King. So it'll be running from Friday night to Sunday afternoon. So I asked Joel P. King to ascend and perform as he sees fit. Thank you.
Thank you for the honor and the privilege to be able to present. Thank you for your work, and thank you for making it possible for us to do what we do as a youth, working to inspire and heal a community. The free bird leaps on the back of the wind and floats downstream to the current ends and dips his wing in the orange sun rays and dares to claim the sky. But a bird that stalks down his narrow cage can seldom see through his bars of rage. His wings are clipped and his feet are tied, so he opens his throat to sing. The caged bird sings with fearful trill of the things unknown, but long for steel, and his tune is heard on the distant hill, for the crazed bird sings of freedom. The free bird thinks of another breeze, and the trade winds soft through the sighing trees, and the fat worms waiting on a dawn bright lawn, and he names the sky his own. But a caged bird stands on the grave of dreams. His shadow shouts on a nightmare scream. His wings are clipped and his feet are tied, so he opens his throat to sing. The caged bird sings with a fearful trill of things unknown, but long for steel, and his tune is heard on the distant hill, for the caged bird sings of freedom. Maya Angelou. [Singing] I've been buked and I've been scorned. I've been buked and I've been scorned, children. I've been buked and I've been scorned. Yes, I've been talked about, shows you bound. There is trouble all over this world. Yes, there is trouble all over this world, children. There is trouble all over this world. Yes, there is trouble all over this world. Wait in the water. Wait in the water, children. Wait in the water. God called the trouble the water. I see sometimes I'm up, sometimes I'm down. Oh, oh, yes, Lord. But still, my soul is heavenly bound. Oh, oh, yes, Lord. Done, made my vow to the Lord. And I never will turn back. Oh, Lord, I will go. I shall go to see what the end will be. Oh, Lord, I will go. I shall go to see what the end will be. I say the one thing we did right was the day we started to fight. Keep your eyes on the prize. Hold on, hold on. I say the one thing we did right was the day we started to fight. Keep your eyes on the prize. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Keep your eyes on the prize. Hold on, hold on, hold
I used to be able to sing like that before my accident. We'd like to thank him for such a wonderful presentation and for you. Let's give him a little... He sang for us a medley of songs, many of our freedom songs, including the songs that were used during slavery to signal that somebody's going to run into freedom. And so they were all historic. And so we thank him again. That completes the caucus's presentation. We thank you for listening closely. There'll be other resolutions, I know, but that completes our caucus's presentation this year. Thank you very much.
April?
We have one other resolution that I as Alderman from the 18th, recognizing is Shirley I'd like to just read portions of it. Says, "Whereas it's come to the attention of this Honorable Board of Aldermen, the many accomplishments, achievements, and contributions that Pastor Shirley Paige Woodley has made to the city of St. Louis. In making history, she was the first African American to be employed as a certified Regis 9/11 Crisis Communications Police and Fire Dispatcher in the municipality of St. Louis, Missouri. Whereas her professional experience in the Department of Correction allows her to see the offender recidivism rates up close and caused her to take action. And whereas feeling and responding to divine calling, she became the senior pastor and founder of a sure foundation Christian church. And whereas her evangelist calling is inclusive of volunteerism and personified in the Department of Corrections, she also founded, was founder of a sure foundation Christian church prison ministry, being a former certified Regis 9/11 Police Communicator. She clearly saw the need and accepted the call and began volunteering from prisons in Missouri and later into Illinois. She currently is in her 23rd year of volunteerism and is a proud two-time recipient of the Volunteer of the Year Award presented by the Illinois Department of Corrections. And whereas she has had the privilege of attending the Congressional Passional Briefings in Washington, DC. And in 2017, she was interviewed by Dr. Turnhill, Chancellor Emeris University, Missouri-St. Louis, for Women as Change Agents, an oral history project for the State Historical Society of Missouri. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and commemorate the many accomplishments of Pastor Shirley Paige Woodley and her deep commitment to the city of St. Louis. She is an individual that's taken upon herself to take her own time to try to make a difference in the city of St. Louis. We know that no one individual can do this. But if we each take the time to try to make a difference, we can improve this city. And somehow, in her spirit, she felt the calling to do so and did not hesitate and has been awarded and cited by the state of Illinois for her volunteerism over 23 years of it. That means she wasn't paid a dime for it and has made a difference to our city. It is my honor to present her this resolution this year in 2018 during Black History Month. Thank you.
Good morning. I would just like to say thank you to the entire, the full Board of Aldermen for the city of St. Louis for acknowledging the labor of unconditional love, the work that I do in the prisons. Called by God and commissioned to do it, I want to thank each and every organization represented here today for your supportive services that assist the offenders and we will and we can reduce the recidivism. Amen? Amen. Thank
Let's give the pastor one more big round of applause. She's also, she's also a filmmaker. She does, she has at least one movie out right now. And I'll get the name of it so we can all catch it. But she's doing all kinds of great things throughout our community. She is also former Alderman, April Ford Griffin's pastor. And I can't thank her enough for the work that she continues to do throughout our community. Alderman from the 19th has one more thing to share with us.
We should take more than a moment. As we know, another crusader has left us. You know, Billy Graham, some people may have agreed with some of the things and some of the positions that he took. But he made us have conversations. And so, his 99 years on this earth, he's done so many things and brought so many people together and sometimes separated some. But that's okay. That's okay. Because he gave his life to this world. And I would like to ask all of us to take a moment of silence for him and his work and especially sending our most deepest sympathy and condolences to his family.
Send everybody in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand, please rise for a moment of silence for the passing of Pastor Billy Graham. Thank you. Moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest. Any introduction. Other one from the 14th.
President and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Demetrius Alfred and Nathan Lett from Firefighters Local 73, Ms. Sannette Magnus, Attorney at Law from Lewis Rice, and Clinton McBride, Laborers Union, and Megan McBride from Kelly
Other one from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mr. Joel P. King of JPEC Productions, and also Larry Richardson, who most of us know as Rick Lewis, entertainer in our region here. And most especially, he is a renowned karaoke performer. So we're going to stand here, Mr. Rick Lewis. Thank you.
Welcome. Other one from the 6th.
President, I'd like to have as my honored guest, Allison Dreyth with Neyral, Missouri, and State Representative Cora Faith Walker.
Other one from the 13th.
President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest Keith Hans from the Carpenters District and any other one, anybody else from the Carpenters Districts that's here. I think Keith Taylor's here.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I would like to have as my honored guest today, the 9th Ward Democratic Committee Man, Mr. Brian Walsh, as well as my state representative from the 78th, Mr. Bruce Franks.
Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Keith Taylor and Jeff Hans from the Carpenters Regional Council, and also our 7th Ward Committee Man, Marty Joe Murray. Thank you.
Other one from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest David Sweeney with Lewis Rice, Sannette Magnus with Lewis Rice, and former State Senator Tim Green with NICA and IBW Local 1.
Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since it's crowded down here on the floor today, high up above us in the gallery is our friend Ken Franklin from ByState and brand new, interning at ByState going to Washington University, Mr. Brandon Stevenson. Welcome.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to introduce as my special guest, Ms. Linda
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. My special guest today is no other than Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Any further?
Former State Senator Tim Green or someone, did you? Good.
We also have Ms. Rice from the Empowerment of Grace Church. Thank you so much for being here today. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from 10th would like to wraps up.
Sorry, the new guy was taking my spot over there. I had to go where... As we... I woke up this morning and thought I was in Illinois. The governor was indicted, so I had to make sure where I was before I spoke today. Here we are on February 23rd. It was on this day in 1836, the seeds of the admiral took place. In 1945, the Marines put the United States' flag on top of Mount Suribachi in Iwo Jima. But most importantly, today is the day that Leo Hurstfield invented the Tootsie Roll. So everyone enjoy Tootsie Roll Day. And for all you newer Aldermen, I hope you were paying attention because Alderman Kenny will having a pop quiz before the next public safety meeting. If you don't answer five or six questions correctly, your bill will not be passed. Thank you.
Ms. Rice is also the liaison for the Uganda Parliament. She said they will be back again in April. So thank you for coordinating that every year. Let's give her one more big round of applause before we move on. Alderman from the 18th, recognized on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the February 9th and February 16th minutes.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th. Seconded by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the 6th.
I would like to move Board Bill 221 onto the perfection consent calendar.
Madam Clark, please make note of that. Board Bill 221 from the informal calendar to the perfection consent calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off Alderman from the 17th?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take-
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take, uh, Board Bill Number 191, and I need to do a floor substitute on that, so, um...
Okay. Would you want to just move it to the regular perfection calendar and handle it when we get there?
That is fine.
All right. Madam Clerk, please move Board Bill 191 to the regular perfection calendar.
And then, uh, Mr. President, I'd like to take 248 and move that to the, uh, third reading, uh, calendar, please.
And Madam Clerk, please make note of that, move Board Bill...
249 is a...
248 and 249 to the third reading consent calendar or the regular third reading calendar?
I'll shoot for consent.
All right. Move Board Bills 248, 249 to the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
And also, if they requested, Alderman from the 1st, remove, uh, from the third reading consent calendar Board Bill 256, move that to the regular third reading calendar. All right, yeah, Alderman from the 1st.
256 in any of my books, I don't know if other people have it, but I didn't find it. And also, which ones did Alderman from the 17th just move to the consent calendar?
248 and 249.
And where was that moved from?
The informal calendar.
Okay. Let's see here, before I'll say if I oppose or not.
We have some time on that. You could do it, uh, before we get to the third...
I am opposed to them being on the consent calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 248 and 249 on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Would it, Alderman from the 23rd?
I'd like to move 221 off of the consent calendar.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill 221 on the regular perfection calendar instead of perfection consent calendar.
221, what was that?
Yeah, 221, which was on the informal calendar. Uh, move it to the regular perfection calendar. So you have 221 on the regular perfection calendars, 248 and 249, uh, on the third reading
So noted.
With that, we will dispense with line item seven through 10, first reading Board Bills.
Board Bill 266, sponsored by Alderman Navarro and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 215 York. Board Bill 267, sponsored by Alderman Moore, pursuant to ordinance 68937, authorizing honorary street name Frankie Muse Freeman Boulevard to begin at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue North Seren Run East on Lincoln to the intersection of Lincoln and Bishop P.L. Scott Avenue. Board Bill 268, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package of drink, liquor, license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 21st Ward Liquor Control District. Board Bill 269, sponsored by Alderman Gunther and ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Iowa and Juniata, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Iowa at Juniata, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Juniata at Iowa, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 270, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance approving minority and women-owned business enterprise program for the city, authorizing certain actions, amending ordinance 69427 pertaining to the workforce inclusion by amending sections of the Vice Code of the City of St. Louis to increase percentage of goals for minority women and city residents, and to put in place a mandatory one-year disqualification penalty and liquidated damages for developers and contractors who fail to meet the goals and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 271, sponsored by Alderman Davis, pursuant to ordinance 68937, and ordinance authorizing honorary street name Norman R.S.A. Avenue to begin at the intersection of Thomas and Webster Run South on Webster to the intersection...
Have some water? Please proceed.
Of Webster and James Cool Papa Bell, that's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 266, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 267, 269, 271, and to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 268, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bills were reported out Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 254, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1301 Union. Board Bill 257, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3434 and 3436 Indiana. Board Bill 264, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan for 3450 Wisconsin. The following Board Bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 186, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance amending ordinance 65857 pertaining to the redevelopment agreement between the city and Grand Center as amended, and amending the same to authorize an application for abatement for 3637 Washington Fox Garage Project for further amending ordinance 68874 by authorizing a supplemental trust indenture containing a severability clause. Board Bill 245 as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman and Alderwomen, Oldenburg, Rhodey, Bosley, Davis, Kotar, and Murphy, and ordinance directing St. Louis Development Corporation to complete an annual city economic growth strategy report and present the findings of the report to members of the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Aldermen Financial Analysts. Board Bill 261, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Tax Increment Financing Commission of the city to amend the city foundry St. Louis redevelopment plan and redevelopment project areas. By amending the redevelopment plan by combining redevelopment project two and three to a new redevelopment project area two, revising the boundaries between redevelopment area and a new redevelopment area two, changing the use in new redevelopment area two from residential to retail and office, revising the financing plan to remove tax abatement as an incentive in the redevelopment area two, activating the new redevelopment area two, establishing a city foundry St. Louis RPA Special Allocation Fund, making findings with respect thereto, authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 262 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance affirming adoption of the city foundry St. Louis RPA to redevelopment pan and, uh, plan and RPA to redevelopment area, RPA to redevelopment project between the city and FOPA for the city foundry St. Louis RPA to redevelopment project, prescribing the form and details of said agreement designating FOPA partners as developers of the RPA to redevelopment area, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property within RPA to redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of second reading.
We'll dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 241, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Ingracia, Martin, Spencer, Cone, Vicaro, and Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the collection of administrative citation fines assessed by the Building Commissioner pursuant to ordinance 66857 on buildings or structures within the city, authorizing the control upon receiving certification of administrative citation fine amounts to cause a special tax bill to be assessed to property owners, or if the amount is unpaid for more than one year, authorizing amounts to be added to the annual real estate tax bill containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 242, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Ingracia, Martin, Spencer, Cone, Vicaro, and Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to enforcement of code violations relating to building structures premises partially repealing and amending Section 11 of ordinance 66857, and enacting a new subsection C related to the procedures for the collection of administrative citation fines containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar. Alderman from the 17th. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Uh, Mr. President, I move, uh, that we, um, perf, uh, approve the perfectioning consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the 17th. Seconded by Alderman from the 26th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 34 Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen, Ingracia, Spencer, Martin, Gunther, Green, and Cone, and ordinance facilitating safe passage to and from a healthcare facility and prohibiting activities near certain facilities containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 34 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect Board Bill 34 Committee Substitute.
Move by Alderman from the 6th, I entertain a second on motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 15th. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is a really important bill for public safety here in the city of St. Louis. Um, a number of months back, continued calls for service to the Planned Parenthood Clinic on Forest Park Parkway had risen from 38 in 2015 to 73 in 2017. I sat down with the police captain of that district, um, and the leaders of the escorts who, um, let patients, helped patients access, um, as volunteers because of the problems there, and we determined that, um, the laws and the books, uh, the police were not able to stop folks from impeding traffic. There are also, um, other public safety issues with respect to the, the traffic when it gets stopped by some of the people who are protesting outside the Planned Parenthood Clinic, it backs up traffic on Forest Park Parkway. Um, there's also been many calls for service, um, for peace disturbances as well. And so, I sat down with a wide variety of stakeholders, um, from the ACLU, Planned Parenthood, Neyral, Missouri, activists from Black Lives Matter, Organization for Black Struggle, um, to make sure that we could tailor a bill that would legally protect First Amendment rights of demonstrators, but also balance the constitutional rights that people have according to the U.S. Supreme Court, um, to access healthcare facilities free from harassment without being impeded, um, and be able to exercise the police powers that we have to ensure the safety of, of our residents here in the city of St. Louis. So, I would, with that, I would renew my motion.
All right. Uh, we also want to recognize Frank Calcullin. He's been on a long hiatus, but he's, he's back with us. Let's, let's welcome him. Welcome, Frank. Any further, Alderman from the 23rd?
President, members of the Board, I stand opposed to this bill. Anytime we take away anyone's First Amendment rights, and this does that, because I do, I'm pro-life, I will admit that, and that's what we're targeting here, but it does take away our First Amendment rights to be able to get, get our word out there. The same is, you never heard me rise against anything on the Stockley case because people have First Amendment rights. When we start to violate those rights, no matter what anyone says, no matter, well, it doesn't really matter. If it's a public safety thing, during that, there were hos, during, we'll go back to Stockley, during that, the hospitals along King's Highway were blocked. You never heard me speak out against any of this. This I speak out against because this is a direct violation. It'll end up in court, but this is a direct violation of not only my civil rights, but other people, and once we start playing with it, I will warn you that we'll continue to play, that we start taking away, we don't like this, let's make a buffer zone over here. Well, we don't like that, let's restrict that. We can have all this in court forever, or we can do the right thing and vote this thing down. It is not the right thing, because again, people that have an opposing position have that right under the First Amendment to voice their opinion and not from a distance. And I would encourage everyone to vote against this.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 20th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I want to make two points about this bill. Uh, this is more than, uh, a decision about, more than just a decision about a right, a woman's right to choose. Planned Parenthood provides more services than just abortions. In fact, that's the mo, most of what they do is provide health services. Uh, in a state like Missouri, where we have refused to expand Medicaid, and we have a population where almost 30% of our residents live below poverty, Planned Parenthood is , uh, the only medical option for many of the women in our city. And they provide a very valuable service, from regular exams on a regular basis to not only men, excuse me, not only women, but, uh, STD testing for men as well. Uh, and as you all know, we are the number one city in the country for STDs. Planned Parenthood provides a very, very valuable service, and no one deserves to be harassed coming into the, to get those services. Um, I want to make, the, my, the second point I want to make that's really gotten lost in the shuffle here is that this bill doesn't prevent counselors from talking to people coming in and out of Planned Parenthood. What it does is it prevents people from impeding the flow of traffic, preventing the movement of cars and pedestrians coming into the facility. It doesn't prevent counselors from talking to people. This is an issue of safety. The traffic gets backed up on Forest Park Parkway, and this is going to prevent that blockage from occurring and allow public safety to continue to enter the building. And with that, I, uh, ask for the, my colleagues to look favorably on this as an issue of public safety. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I agree with those who are concerned about any infringement on our First Amendment rights, and I think that we all, um, should definitely vigorously defend our First Amendment rights, especially in light of the excessive influence that money and, and corporations have over our airways and access to government decision-makers. However, I think, I, I know that we have all become very comfortable and familiar with limited restrictions on, on this right, and we do it every day when we, not every day, but every time we go to the polls. We are familiar with having a buffer zone. We agree that there are certain decisions people should be able to enter into a polling place without having excessive influence. So we are all familiar with these sorts of restrictions. Um, I would say that there's a distinction here between thi, this sort of situation where you have women making legal, very personal decisions about their own reproductive healthcare, um, and there's a distinction between that and people who are protesting systems, policies, and institutions. I very much support people doing that. I very much support people laying down in front of the Jefferson Bank because they are opposing a system, a policy, or an institution. But not everyone has the right to have a one-on-one conversation with anyone of their choosing about a very personal reproductive healthcare decision, and that is what we are talking about here today. We are not talking about infringing people's right to speech, their right to protest, their right to challenge systems, policies, and institutions. We are talking about individual decisions, and this buffer is something that has been, been held up. We are not talking about 35 feet, 50 feet. We are looking at a very reasonable restriction to protect women's rights. So thank you, and I encourage all of my colleagues to support this bill.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the Board, um, few, I don't know, a few years ago or years ago, we, uh, got into a, a discussion about Planned Parenthood. I am pro-choice. Talked about my very personal decision back then of, um, my husband and I having, um, infertility issues and choosing not, that I personally would not want to have an abortion, but never would want to make that decision for anyone else. I agree with Alderman from the 28th Ward, when she talks about, we do have buffer zones. I was gonna talk about that myself when you go to vote. Um, and that's, uh, that's something that we're well aware of. Uh, there are other things. You, you, you don't have unfeathered freedom, uh, First Amendment right. You cannot yell "fire" in a, um, theater. You will get arrested. However, I am not in support, and I rise today with heavy heart because I don't support this bill. And, um, all the people that have emailed me who are anti-choice, because I am pro-choice, you almost have pushed me over to the other side with all the propaganda you sent me. I just want you to know, that didn't convince me, what you were sending me, because you're anti-choice. Because unless you've been in that position to make those choices yourself, you don't understand it, and I do personally. Okay? Um, so, you didn't convince me that. I, I, I've also been down here longer than anybody but two people, um, even with my 10 years' absence. And so, I know what happens when we pass something, then they use it for something else. My concern, which I told Neyral and since it's brought up, is that whole thing of preventing people from getting a certain amount. If you were in the driveway, I would have a problem. I also drive by this establishment two, three, four, five times a day. I've also taken the extraordinary, uh, experience of trying to drive in there myself. And I personally, and it's just my own personal thing, have never had any bad experience or saw anybody blocking people from having, uh, access to that facility. If I did, if they were standing in the driveway or something, I would be standing here saying something different, but that just has not been my, uh, experience. I was told, well, they tell people you have to sign up right here, and, um, so I said, why doesn't Planned Parenthood put up a nice big sign saying that you do not have to sign up here? Okay? That we don't have to make laws for everything, there are other ways to address it. So, they have not convinced me that there is a need for this law. Um, also, even though you sat down with Black Lives Matter, I sat down with, looking at my experience down here, um, they never got, um, the Cruising Law passed. my experience down here, they never got the cruising law passed when I was down here. I was the chair of public safety, and I've always, they got it passed when I was gerrymandered and cheated. And the reason why, it's not that I wanted cruising, it affected my neighborhood, but I didn't want picking and cherry-picking of cruising. So they did cruising, they stopped it in Forest Park downtown, they still cruise up and down Natural Bridge. I knew that that was not really going to be the answer, so I opposed it. So when I stand here today as a pro-choice person, and I say I'm not supporting this, you have not convinced me that it is needed and that it's something that we have to do. If then they come back after we pass this and say, well, okay, Black Lives Matters, you can't come this close, or whatever else, you can't come this close, I have a problem with that. And you have to give me hard data. I got one letter, one email from one lady who really did touch me, who says she lives near that, but the problems that she talked about, the noise and stuff, if you move them eight feet back, they're still, that's still going to be a problem. If you have made your mind up about whether you want to have a procedure or not, or if you're going in for health services, most certainly it is a personal choice. But whether we like it or not, abortion has become a political statement. And it's been that for a long time, since way before Roe v. Wade. And I went from an anti-choice person to a pro-choice. And I have to face that in a family that's very well split about what their positions are. But I am pro-choice, but I am not, not convinced that this is the way to do it. I understand that the Supreme Court have okayed it. There's a lot of things the Supreme Court have okayed that I do not agree with. And one of them is that the fact that you don't want to have to talk to people who are telling you you shouldn't have a procedure, or that's just something that you might have to deal with, okay? Because if I was going to have the procedure, there's nothing you could say to me that would prevent me, because my mind has been made up. Now, that's not everybody. I know there are some people that are teetering, that are on the brink, that are not quite sure. It is a very personal decision, but it's also a very personal decision for those people who believe differently from me, that they want to be able to, up to the last minute, say, hey, there's another way to do this. I've heard from many people, I have two cousins that are adopted, and so they are very anti-choice because they said they wouldn't have been here, they adopted in our family, if their mother had had an abortion. We go around and around about that, because I have some answers to that. But people, part of protest is making you uncomfortable. That is part of the protest. When you are part of that protest that's making people uncomfortable, you think that's a great thing. But when you get made uncomfortable, you do not think that's a great thing, okay? Then you want to shut people down. I have always, I'm opposed to it down here, I'm opposed to everywhere. I remember when Black Lives Matter went to Harris Stowe doing Martin with the King, and my friend said, oh, they came, and why would they do that? Because they were making you middle-class black people uncomfortable, because you need to know what's going on and don't think that it couldn't happen to your child, okay? So, yes, it makes you uncomfortable, yes, it's been passed by the Supreme Court, but I have not been convinced. And I'm, should be an easy person to convince, because you could give me some black numbers and some, all these times I've driven by this, years and years, I just have never seen that. So when I hear that, nobody ever provided me any copies of any police reports about how much and all of that. So you, I am a document person, and I am also a pro-choice person. So when you have not been able to convince me, and I call the people who are not pro-choice anti-choice. I don't say that you're pro-life, I say you're anti-choice. But you haven't been able to convince me, and I've been telling you this from the beginning, and for that reason, I am not going to support this issue, and I will continue to oppose it with my fear that this will be addressed to other issues, that once we get something, when we started with gambling, we started out you had to be in the water, then you had to be in a moat. Now, you didn't have to do anything, we moved things along. And so I don't want that to happen. And my, my issue as a black woman is not just the ability to have abortion or not, or there are so other many more issues. And I've always told my white sisters, because I call you my white sisters, that if it comes to blackness or the choice issue, I will always choose my blackness. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the sponsor yield for questioning?
Will the sponsor yield for question? Alderman from the sixth?
I will.
Alderman from the twenty-first, please proceed.
In the bill, it states that this is just not limited to Planned Parenthood, but any healthcare facility or services, right?
Correct.
Were any other healthcare facilities or providers involved in the construction of this board bill?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Were any other healthcare services or facilities involved in the construction of this board bill?
No.
Was Planned Parenthood involved in the construction of this board bill?
Yes.
Is that the only one?
Well, the Nurses Union was involved in conversations.
I mean, I get the bill's language. The bill language does state that is, it's just not for Planned Parenthood, but the way it seems as if we are catering or giving special incentives to Planned Parenthood because they do have protesters outside their doors. But it also seems like that if we were to pass this board bill, that we would be telling protesters what they can do and what they can't do. Stand this far back, don't go to this entrance. I think that that's, that's counterproductive, and I think that goes against why people protest in the first place. I understand the need for Planned Parenthood. I'm personally not a fan of Planned Parenthood, but I understand the need for it. But I think that instead of debating how far people should stand back when it comes to an entrance, I think that we should honestly be looking at the social ramifications involved around why people need to get abortions, especially when you look at the trauma of a young girl who even has to contemplate the fact that she needs an abortion because of social, economical conditions. Honestly, I'm stuck in between this board bill. I don't know where to vote for it or against it, and I'm hoping I hear something to lead me one way or another. But the one thing that I do see is that we are literally setting limitations to protesters or to advocacy groups, no matter what they're protesting or what it can be. I think that we are going to open up Pandora's Box, which will open up another can of worms. I yield, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the eleventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make clear that, one, this isn't necessarily about abortion, that's illegal, so we shouldn't be arguing that point. But also, we also are not talking about protesters. We are talking about people who believe they are self-anointed sidewalk counselors, and that they have no medical background, but they think that it's acceptable to walk up to women who are going into Planned Parenthood for even well-women exams. And they think that they know what's best, and they also falsely coerce women. They say that they're with Planned Parenthood to sign up here, or they say that they're medical professionals. That's not protesting. That's lying, and that's also a public safety issue. And I know other cities, cities like Columbia, Missouri, they send their police officers over to cover Planned Parenthood because they see it as a public safety issue. So I don't necessarily think this is about actual protesting. This is about falsely coercing women, and that is a public safety issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this bill, and I would say I've been able to visit the doctor a few times during my life, and I've always been able to do so without anybody harassing me when I walk into the doctor's office. So I think for men, we ought to consider, not that men go to Planned Parenthood too, of course, but we ought to consider what that feels like to walk into a doctor's office and have somebody tell you, you're doing it wrong, you shouldn't be walking in there. It's never happened to me, I doubt it will ever happen to me, but hopefully thanks to this bill, if I go to the doctor in St. Louis in the future, I know it won't happen to me. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the nineteenth?
I had made a statement sitting here because my colleague from the first ward so eloquently explained this. But then, when I hear a statement that gives the idea to the public that we're trying to prohibit people from standing at the door of the doctor's office, trying to talk to someone and talk them out of a procedure or process that they believe is good for them, is just sending the wrong message. First of all, the people are not inside the Planned Parenthood facility. Secondly, if you are in a car and you don't want to talk to somebody, you just drive forward. The last part about this is, I want people to have as much information as possible. I'm pro-choice, but at the end of the day, we need a Planned Parenthood. We also need other information so that people can make decisions for themselves. It may be just one simple thing that took them in that direction, but if they find out that that can be solved for them, and then they could go and have their baby, have assistance, their resources for them, they should have that information. If anything, we need to make sure that we set something up out there with all kinds of brochures about every kind of agency that can help you all over this country. So at the end of the day, when you take something like this, and you know we've been down this road before, ended up in court, lost, city had to pay for it, some more nonsense, so where we are again is, why bring another burden to a situation that has already been solved in federal court? We've already lost in our Supreme Court with issues with this. There's an interference level on anything that you do in life. There is an interference level that we all cope with every day, no matter what decision we are making or what action we are trying to take. And it is even more perverse now because of social media, the internet, systems, and everything else. They tell me when I drive up to the drive-up, when I drive off, thank you for buying a hamburger. Well, let me take back hamburgers, I'll eat hamburger. But they tell me, thank you for buying something, and give me a coupon to tell me to come back, they are coercing me, trying to make me continue to come back to their establishment. But what are you going to do about it? We are interfaced with people and information everywhere we go, because somebody is trying to either bring you to their way of thinking and/or get you to buy something from them, or just simply let you know that they exist. We're going too far. We're just going too far. And I tell you right now, I'm going to have to vote against it. And the majority of my public, all these emails I've been receiving, they're saying for me to vote no. So I will vote no on their behalf. I've talked to all my neighborhood organizations, I will vote no on their behalf. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fifteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise in support of this bill today, and I'll be honest, I was torn at first when we started having these conversations, as somebody who definitely, you know, has been engaged within the protest movement, who definitely supports free speech rights. But where we are right now is we have two constitutionally protected rights that are at odds. We have the constitutionally protected right to free speech, and we also have the constitutionally protected right to access a legal medical service without interference. Last session, I was the sponsor of Board Bill 203, which is reproductive health nondiscrimination organs. In crafting that bill, I had the reason to go to Planned Parenthood on many occasions. I also use services at Planned Parenthood. And it was on many occasions that, and I'll be honest, the first time that this happened to me, I was really confused what was happening. I pulled up, and there was a, you know, a sign there and a group of people, and it said, check in here. And so I thought, okay, Planned Parenthood has a new level of security here, because this was right after there had been the shooting at a Planned Parenthood, I believe it was in Oklahoma. And I thought, okay, this is another level of protection. So I stopped, and I pulled over, and I rolled down my window, and as soon as I did that, two other people stepped in front of my vehicle. And as soon as they started speaking, I started realizing that, okay, these aren't folks from Planned Parenthood who are talking to me. These are folks that are trying to get me to not be able to access the facility who are talking to me. I was probably there five, six minutes until, until I, you know, I finally just rolled up the window and just sat there until they finally moved. I'm a pretty strong-willed person, there was nobody that was going to, you know, scare me or intimidate me away from accessing that clinic that day. And I recognize that that's not true for a lot of, a lot of women. The second thing I want to bring up about this is even when we are protesting, we know that there are limits to what is legally allowed when we do protest. When we are taking to the streets, when people are shutting down highways, we acknowledge that these things are against the law. And people choose to commit acts of civil disobedience to break these laws that they find unjust. Even if we pass this, that does not mean that these sidewalk counselors cannot break what they deem to see as an unjust law. That doesn't mean that they can't engage in their own acts of civil disobedience. But what this will do, I think, is provide a small enough buffer that cars can get through, that folks won't be intimidated when entering the facility, and that we're finding that balance between a constitutionally protected right to free speech and the constitutionally protected right to access a legal medical service.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third?
You know, I've listened to all of everything. I agree with the Alderwoman from the first ward. This will open up a Pandora's Box, because the minute we start doing this, say in eight feet, then we'll start making it eight feet from any driveway, can't block anything. This is going to open up a bigger mess than they're trying to fix. And I also agree that protests are meant to cause intimidation, to make people think, you know, you know, I had asked Alderman Bosley, I said, what did you guys feel like you had accomplished during the Stockley things? I didn't really see a lot. And he said, it was just getting the word out there. It was trying to, you know, did they accomplish a lot of whatever? All they were trying to do was bring a light to something. The minute we start regulating any smallest amount of people's rights to be able to express themselves, yes, I agree with the Alderwoman from the first, it's intimidating, but I don't know of anybody that called me and said, gee, you know what, I couldn't get in there. I have actually received a couple emails from people that chose not to have an abortion, that were happy that they went that route. And the people that are out there, for the most part, are very quiet, very prayerful. There are people that get out of line. I don't disagree with that. There were people that got out of line during the Stockley protest, but that wasn't part of the protesters. The protesters were trying to get a message out. And if people felt intimidated by the message, then it worked. Because if we do a protest, but we hold it in the back room somewhere, and we say, well, we had a protest, but we didn't want anybody to see our protest, they're useless. Why don't we make it, you know, we, once we start this, and I guarantee you, I will introduce similar legislation that says, you know, the fines on here are like $200, ninety days in jail, you get warned on the first time. Let's do that on the protest, put them in jail for ninety days. You want to see this place get protesters out here? We can't do that. We need to give people their right to their opinions. Whether you agree or you disagree with that opinion, it doesn't matter. And again, I agree a hundred percent with the Alderwoman from the first, when she said protests are meant to be intimidating, yes. And it's also meant to get a message out. And again, I think that if we vote this thing in, first off, it's going to end up in court anyway, but if we vote this thing in, we open up a Pandora's Box for even more, because we could point to this and say, well, if these rules go for that, these kind of fines go for these kind of protests, then we'll start setting up buffer zones all over the city, saying if you violate that, it's a $200 fine, it's ninety days in jail, that's what this one says. And the minute we do that, we're going to open this up for a lot of buffer zones and a lot of people spending ninety days in jail for only expressing their First Amendment rights. And I'll sit down and shut up, but this one really bothers me.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-fifth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to the day that the Alderman from the twenty-third actually does. I look forward to the day that the alderman from the 23rd actually does sit down and shut up. I'm joking, Joe. But, no, I rise today in support of this bill. You know, I think that, you know, I've been an activist for most of my adult life. As someone who had to struggle to come to terms with their own identity, you know, that's a mark that forever leaves its impression on you. And as such, you know, it was a call to activism in general. And so, social justice became a very big part of my DNA at a very early age because of that. I do have to share a story, if I might be afforded the personal privilege here. But a very dear friend of mine, who, neighbor, constituent, recently passed away, she actually had a medical procedure done before Roe v. Wade happened. So, you know, as a young woman, she had a situation with a crisis pregnancy, if you can call it that. But for her to seek assistance, any kind of medical assistance, she was not able to find a physician that wanted to even remotely talk to her about, you know, this type of a procedure. What ended up happening to her was she went into a home, someone's basement, never met a nurse, never met a doctor, never even knew their names, and had an exceptionally invasive procedure performed on her because of the, you know, medical condition that she was in at the time. And so, I just, I tell that because I think it's important, you know, since it becomes a topic of discussion. You know, Roe v. Wade happened for a reason. Roe v. Wade, you know, is the law of the land. It's important to recognize a woman's right to do with her body as she needs to do, in many cases, for health purposes. I also say that because, you know, since Roe v. Wade has been passed, the state of Missouri has addressed a lot of the concerns that you all are talking about. You know, the state of Missouri has a 72-hour waiting period for abortions. 72 hours. So someone has to have a counseling session and a patient visit, and then they have to wait from that period, another 72 hours before coming back to the exact same location, to the exact same doctor, to have this procedure performed. 72 hours, that they get to think about what's going to happen, about how this impacts their life. Not that they didn't already have that 72 hours beforehand, you know. I think in many cases, when folks make the decision to actually move forward with this, you know, life decision, that they don't come to it lightly. You know, it's not an easy decision. And so, you know, I think that it's important to recognize that there are waiting periods in place for folks to consider. People just can't walk into a Planned Parenthood and have a procedure done. Also, Planned Parenthood underneath state law is mandated to provide counseling on all options that are afforded their patients when it comes to abortion services. All options, not one, all. They have to provide under state law, and they are monitored by the state very closely, but they have to provide counseling to all of their clients that come in for that particular service. They are aware of adoption agencies, they are aware of other agencies that provide assistance. They are, like, the patients that are provided these services are made aware of alternative options that are afforded to them. They do not need to rely upon a sidewalk counselor for those services, you know. And I'm all for people providing their own perspective and opportunities to, you know, share and learn and grow. But it is mandated underneath state law that these patients are actually provided all options of counseling available to them, and all alternatives. So that being said, you know, I have been a member of Planned Parenthood, I've been a board member of Planned Parenthood, I've been a patient of Planned Parenthood. So probably more so than anyone else in this chamber, I have been to this facility probably more than anyone else here, with the exception of, you know, a few, potentially. As a patient of Planned Parenthood, I have visited the Forest Park site, I've visited the Grand site, I've had STI screenings at both locations on numerous occasions as a regular fitness of health situation, although not as active as I once was, so I don't need to worry about it, but I still do it as a matter of health, to enter some levity into the situation. So, you know, but when you go, there's actually a very distinct difference between the locations. And so, on South Grand, there's not regularly protesters outside of the South Grand location. However, that's not to say that South Grand hasn't been subjected to some of the same activities that have happened over on Forest Park. Actually, I believe about a year or two ago, there was a woman who actually broke into the, or, you know, bashed in the window of the clinic on South Grand, and specifically stated, you know, that, you know, the pro-life movement is the reason why she did so. So I think it would be very callous on our part to say that, you know, well, we've driven by a couple different times, or we've gotten out and talked to, you know, the volunteers or sidewalk counselors, and we don't see an issue. Because there is an issue. We've seen it here in our own backyards. You know, the clinics have been targeted, they've been tagged, they've been broken into. The site on Forest Park, you know, regularly does have demonstrations. They also, and I will qualify that, as many of you have said, 90% of the people who attend those are very much, you know, just prayerful, reflective, considerate, maybe even curious about, you know, why someone is in that situation, or how they got into that situation, or why they've made the decision that they've made. And oftentimes, those are conversations that do take place. However, as a patient, you know, whether you're going there for reproductive services, or whether you're going there for a mammography, or whether you're going there for STI screenings, you know, I obviously am not going there, you know, for abortion services, you know. However, my car has been pulled over. You know, they do have check-ins that are not, they are not Planned Parenthood check-ins. And the reason why Planned Parenthood doesn't have a check-in out there is because they don't want to confuse their patients. They know the tactics that are being employed by these folks, and so for them to have a check-in could only further confuse the situation. And so, what they do, what Planned Parenthood does, is they specifically tell their patients, because their patients are often known to them, you know, and have called to schedule an appointment to be there. So they advise patients to please, you know, drive past, we don't check in. But you also have to understand that people do get confused. It's easy to do so, so...
Hold on. Alderman, please state your point of order.
Mike, I've listened of all the different things about abortions and pro-life and everything. This is about a buffer zone, not about what Planned Parenthood does, it's about the First Amendment rights. I sat back and listened, tried not to say anything, but this is not about abortions, it's about people's First Amendment rights, and I would ask that we stick to it. I'm glad to hear that they have all these things going on. It has nothing to do with this resolution.
Point of order, well taken. Alderman from the 25th. The bill, since it references all, you know, more than just Planned Parenthood, and it talks about that buffer zone, so please stick to the buffer zone. And I know you were coming close to it then, but please...
I am happy to do so, but I am not the first that has brought up that issue, so I thought it appropriate to address some of the concerns that have been brought before with the five or six other aldermen that have spoken before me. So I am not the first one that brought this up, you know, to my colleague from the 23rd ward's point of order. I didn't notice him pointing an order out on anyone else who is bringing abortions into the conversation. However, I will say that, you know, from a buffer zone perspective, this particular facility that folks are referencing, you know, there is roughly, you know, on the Forest Park Avenue side of the facility, you know, 200 feet of space. On the Boyle side of the facility, there's roughly 150 feet of space. And, you know, to that point, there's a reasonable expectation when you're visiting any health facility, and, you know, I don't care if it's Planned Parenthood or Barnes. You know, I wouldn't want someone obstructing, if there's a protest or demonstration happening at Barnes, you know, if nurses go on strike, I don't want nurses barricading the entrance to the emergency room or the trauma center. You know, I think that that's a very fair and reasonable expectation. You know, just as my colleague from the 28th ward pointed out, you know, I don't want to be solicited, as I'm going to vote, by every person underneath the sun that's running for office. We know that it happens, but we provide a 25-foot buffer zone so that voters and our citizens are able to get in and out of a polling place with a reasonable expectation of some decorum. And so, while this does not prohibit free speech, you know, it does protect the public safety, because, you know what? Frankly, if there was a strike at Barnes, would you want them to be impeding traffic into the emergency room? Think about that. It's a healthcare facility. People's lives and livelihood are on the line. Do you want to restrict access if there's a protest? I don't think that that's a reasonable or fair expectation. So if there's one reason to support this bill, let it be that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 14th.
Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, I rise against this bill. I think that it is something that will impede the right to free speech. If it hadn't been for those protesters at the Jefferson Bank back in 1963, do you think that we would have the body we have before us today, the diversity we have on this board of aldermen? I think that we need to walk very carefully. I think that as we move forward with this, I think that maybe we should put signs at the exits of the highway. We need a 10-foot buffer zone. It annoys me when somebody walks up and taps on my window and asks me for money. It annoys me when I'm coming out of the grocery store and a clipboard's thrown in front of my face to sign for an initiative petition. Why can't we have buffer zones everywhere? It seems also, as I recall back last fall when the Stockley protests were going on, there was some concern about the access to emergency care at Barnes Hospital when those protests were going on. Why can't Planned Parenthood just put up a sign, a simple sign, that says, "Proceed to the inside to sign in"? This, to me, is a slippery slope that we're proceeding on and we are looking toward inhibiting the right of free speech for all people, not just those people that are in front of Planned Parenthood trying to get their message out. I don't think this is something that we want to take up on an isolated basis. If we do this, I think we should have an access to how do we set these up for everywhere? Why don't we set them up at Schnucks? Why don't we set them up at Shop 'n Save? I get tired of being approached, people asking me for money, or to sign this, or to sign that, or to buy Girl Scout cookies. I don't think that's quite the way I want to live my life. But at the same time, do they have the right to speak? Yes, they do. That's ensured by the First Amendment of our U.S. Constitution. And I think that if, once we start poking that bear, we're going to look for a whole lot more coming back at us, and also some more laws to prohibit Planned Parenthood from carrying out their mission. So I don't really think this is something we want to delve into. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, the alderman from the 25th brought up something that I had not thought of, and I was wondering if he would yield...
Alderman from the 25th, will you yield to questions? And Alderman from the first.
Absolutely.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say, this is why I love debate, because you just cannot think of all the issues. And so, when we all get up and we have discussions about things, there are things that come up. You'd made a point about that this is a, I know everybody wants to make it all about abortion. Again, if y'all don't know, I'm pro-choice, okay? But you talked about what we want to have an emergency X to the hospital block. Do they have emergency patients that actually go to the facilities there? Do you know that?
Do, I, so, I wouldn't say that it would be considered an emergency. So generally, the patients that are coming there have already received counse, well, I mean, not generally, they do receive counseling 72 hours in advance. And so, you know, any, if there is a medical situation that is critical, you know, those patients would either be transported over to BJC, or would have been referred to BJC before any type of procedure would have occurred.
Okay. So then I assume the answer is pretty much no, they don't have emergency patients, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the other question I wanted to ask you is...
But to address the board bill itself, as that was the point that I was making with that, this would apply to other hospitals and not just the facility on Forest Park Avenue. So this board bill covers all healthcare facilities in the city of St. Louis, which would cover the emergency room at BJC.
This board bill covers all healthcare facilities?
Yes.
Is that what, I need to look at that again. Okay, that's why I say again, so I need to reread that. The other thing is, why could, can you tell me why, since you said on the board, why they wouldn't just put up a sign, say, "To proceed in," or why couldn't they put up a sign? And I'm familiar with the one on South, because I lived South St. Louis for numbers of years, I'm familiar with both facilities. Why couldn't there be a sign saying, "Proceed in, you don't need to sign in outside," or something like that?
So Planned Parenthood as an organization has taken many steps from a, if you want to call it, infrastructure perspective, to ensure that, you know, one, you know, patient safety is always paramount for them, but so is their staff. You know, their staff actually doesn't park in that location.
I know, I know where they, I know, I'm familiar.
You know, and so, so, you know, some of our colleagues during the committee hearing actually brought up, you know, well, I went to go talk to some of them, and, you know, they wouldn't, you know, respond back. Planned Parenthood's policy is that staff is not supposed to engage in conversation with protesters that are out there.
But I'm not asking for staff. I'm asking, why couldn't there be a sign that says...
And so, I mean, things that they have done, you know, they, obviously, they put the fence around it, and they have had signs, and as I mentioned, when patients call to schedule appointments, for whatever reason, you know, they advise patients to, you know, drive beyond that barrier.
Okay.
So...
Well, so I go by, I went by there yesterday three or four times. I'm looking for a sign that says, point blank, "Proceed to the inside to sign in," or, "You do not have to sign in outside, it is not our policy to sign in for this facility outside." In fact, I know of no medical facility where it is their policy for you to stop and sign in, okay? I've been going to doctors for 61 years, and at no point have, any point, we had to sign in outside. So I don't think that's a reasonable expectation for almost anyone to think that they would have to sign.
I wholeheartedly agree. However, when you have a volunteer approaching your vehicle in an orange or yellow vest that says "volunteer," you know, or "staff"...
So they're outworking, what I'm saying is, they're outworking us. What, when I hear this, that makes me want to put on another green vest and go out there and volunteer at Planned Parenthood to say, "You don't have to do this."
And that's exactly what volunteers at NARAL do. You know, they walk patients, you know, from their car into the facility. We do have volunteers that meet patients at their vehicle and walk them in.
But, but there's nothing really that prevents them from putting up a sign saying you don't have to...
No, and I'll be more than happy to relay that back to them as well.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all the questions I have. I want to say, my gut, and I'm going to reread this thing again, because, again, the alderman brought up something that I may have missed about all facilities. My gut is hurting as I stand here opposing this, because I was 17 years old when Roe v. Wade got passed, and I know how hard the sisters in the struggle pushed for this right. And that, I know the alderman from the 23rd doesn't want to hear about it, but people had abortions with hangers and everything else, and I remember how hard it is, and I know that there has been a pushback from the other side to get rid of this right. But Roe v. Wade has been legal for 14, four years now, and I want it to remain legal. So I don't want to do anything that undermines that. And I also want to say to the young people who are out here for this, that I respect what you're doing. I just differ on an issue. But you keep up the fight, whether this passes or not, please keep up the fight. And like I said, after I've heard what you said, it is incumbent upon me, if I'm opposing this, to get out there, and that's what I'm going to do, and put on me a different color vest and say, because I think you have to outwork people. When you go to vote, yes, even though we have the 25-foot buffer, guess what? When you get out your car, I have my people out there at your car saying, "Hey, hey, hey, hey." So that does, the buffer zone does not stop... hey, hey, hey." So that does, the buffer zone does not stop people from approaching you, even at the polls, okay? It just moves it away from it. But I feel really bad that I can't support this at this point. And so I'm going to take it incumbent upon myself that I'm going to do something proactive. But I still don't, and I still don't, you have not convinced me, and I cannot support this. And I would suggest that Planned Parenthood put up a sign saying that you don't check in outside. And really, I don't think it's reasonable that people should expect that they should. But just to make sure that I'm doing something positive, I will get out there myself and start volunteering. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? All the woman from the 19th?
Very quickly, I'd just like to share a couple of things. It just so happened last night, I was sitting next to the president of BJH, and we were talking to the community about their concerns for healthcare. We were also talking about how they could improve their communications to the public and what services are provided. And there will be three more listening sessions like that. There will be one in the 21st ward, one in the 3rd ward, and one in South St. Louis as well. But what we want to do is, we don't want to, we want to, we mix things up. You see, the first thing is, there's no protester or volunteer on the parking lot when you get out of your car. That's the first thing. They're out on the sidewalk. So clear that up for the public to know and understand. The next thing is, because I've been dri, you know, I drive that street almost every day, and most especially on Saturdays, three or four times a day. My favorite thrift store's there, Salvation Army, and I'm gonna go there every weekend. So I kept trying to find that sign that everybody talked in, was the check-in sign, and I never saw it. And so I believe that it may have been used in the past, but I know that it's probably been over a year or so since it's been used. And then I wondered, why don't we sit down and have a conversation and ask, "Will you not use the check-in sign anymore?" I'm sure that the protest group and agencies involved would probably say, "That's not a problem." You see, it's just that simple thing that needs to take place. And then you take that and you blow it up to make it appear as though people have been bodily harmed, or, you know, the way it's been expressed, which is not true. Because, you know, I asked my police department, "Run me some stats and show me where people have been physically harmed and are apprehended where they could not move forward." We couldn't find that either. So yes, people pass out information. Yes, people may even chant, but it's no different than anything else. And then the other part that really bothered me was, you haven't had a conversation with any other healthcare providers, with all the hospitals and clinics that we have in the city of St. Louis, and they don't know what you're doing on their behalf. They don't, they haven't had an opinion, they haven't been able to weigh in on this. Come on now. No. No. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All the woman from the 6th, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to address some of the concerns that have been raised, I appreciate the debate here today. This is obviously an important issue to many of us. If there were not problems occurring at the Planned Parenthood clinic on Forest Park Parkway, I would not be here today. Planned Parenthood has tried for quite a while, including when our own president of the board was the 6th ward alderman, to address the concerns. Everything that they've done to date has not worked to ensure patient safety. Jimmy Edwards, the police chief, the police captain, and the officer who is assigned to the community improvement, or the community policing in that area, are all in support of this bill because they know that there are problems there to the tune of 73 calls for service last year for impeding the flow of traffic. They're not able to stop, there are people standing in the middle of the driveway, there are people reaching into people's cars. There are definitely problems. I did also want to mention that we included healthcare facilities across the city because of something that the U.S. Supreme Court looks at called content neutrality. We are not allowed to just put in one clinic. And, and as far as the argument with respect to slippery slope, I'd like to push back on that. Since 2014, a number of cities have enacted buffer zones, including New York City, Spokane, Pittsburgh, and Columbus. Subsequent to those laws being introduced, there has been nothing introduced or tried to push back on, on any other forms of demonstrating or protesting. So I'm requesting that my colleagues understand the importance of, for public safety. Want to remind everybody that, yes, we are, we do need to protect First Amendment rights, but there are other constitutional rights that we've discussed here today that need to be balanced. And so I would urge you to vote in favor of this bill today.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by all the one, all the woman from the 6th that we perfect board bill number 34, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Did you get Mohammed?
I'm sorry?
Did you get Alderman Mohammed?
I got 15, 13 votes, 13 no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion from all the woman from the 6th and perfected board bill number 34, committee substitute.
Sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the planning commission to provide for the establishment of a Forest Park Southeast Form Based District and containing a sevability clause and an effective date clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection of board bill 191.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, I move for perfection of board bill, uh, well, we have a committee substitute, so I need to move for the underlying bill.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been moved by Alderman from the 17th and entertain a second, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Alderman from the 17th, you have a floor substitute?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve a floor substitute. The floor substitute is-
Introduce the floor substitute?
Yes.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th that we introduce a floor substitute to board bill number 191. Entertain a second on that motion? It's been, been moved, seconded by Alderman from 10th. Alderman from the 17th, is the floor substitute for board bill 191 on everyone's desk?
Uh, it is my understanding that it was supposed to be put on everyone's desk.
Um, is it, is it on every? It's the big, yes, all right. All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, members of the board, this board bill is for what we refer to as a form-based code. This will be the second one in the city. First one was in the central west end. I like to describe the form-based code as a means of becoming proactive in our economic development and our, development of our neighborhoods by having, presenting a clear picture, our shared vision for a neighborhood that can then be shared with developers who are interested in building in the area and developing in the area. And we had the hearing on this before the HUD's committee, we had some minor adjustments to make on it, which were now incorporated in the floor substitute. And at this point, I would like to move that we approve or perfect the floor substitute.
Not perfect, just for the introduction. Any further discussion on the introduction of floor substitute for board bill 191? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderman Moore. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Boyd. 24 I-votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 17th, and introduce floor substitute for board bill 191. Alderman from the 17th, you're now recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I now move for perfection of board bill 191 floor substitute.
Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, that we perfect floor substitute for board bill 191. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Board Bill 221, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance approving the petition to establish the EQH Market Street Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose therefore and containing a sevability clause and an emergency clause.
All the woman from the 6th, you recognized on the perfection of board bill 221.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill 221 creates a community improvement district for a Fairfield Inn Hotel downtown at the former site that Harry's Restaurant occupied. It was a nuisance property for quite a while and is now vacant. And worked very closely with SLDC Jonathan Ferry, and then held this bill last week because I wanted some additional questions answered from our own financial analyst, just with, with respect to being very cautionary about how we are incentivizing especially hotels downtown. At the same time that this board bill started working its way through the system at SLDC, we've passed downtown three different hotels with 15 years of 100% tax abatement. And I think this is a much more balanced and effective way to ensure that this hotel project is able to happen, but is not negatively impacting taxpayers and has a definitive time. It will create 30 full-time jobs and 15 part-time jobs. Because of the, the developer working with the SLDC folks, we are able to ensure that they do their hiring through slate, they have to adhere to the living wage and are required to, also adhere to MBE WBE requirements. So I would urge my colleagues to vote for this today.
All right. Alderman from the 23rd?
Once again, we're back to what we were a week ago. This particular one is a CID, Community Improvement District. This is a CID of only one building. This means that taxes collected on that one building who can be spent on that one building. It's not a community. When a community becomes one building, that becomes a problem. And have we done this in the past? Yes. But all the time, we keep on giving all these incentives, you know, I'd like to make my house a tax-abating, it said, this, this is also being tax-abated. It's, it's got this crazy, it's being sold to LRA, and then LRA's going to lease it back to them to give back to them so that when they buy the stuff, it's, no taxes generated. Again, a CID stands for Community Improvement District. That doesn't mean one building. And we keep making, talking up here like we're going to kind of knock this stuff off. Once again, we're back to doing the same thing that we're saying we're not going to do, the same thing that the newspaper picks on us about, the same thing people are saying. Last week, it was almost strange. We sat down and we passed giving a multimillion-dollar tax incentive to a hotel coming across the street from the stadium. At the same time, we passed out of here a bond issue telling people, "We don't got money, we need it." I don't blame people for voting against this stuff. And it's just getting out of control. I don't support this, and I won't be supporting any of these as they're coming up.
All right. Alderwoman from the 6th, all right, I didn't stop you right away, but you never made the motion to perfect for board bill 221. So-
Okay, I moved to perfect board bill 221. Thank you, Mr. President.
Entertain a second on that motion? Seconded by Alderman from the 24th. Any further discussion? All the woman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the 6th would yield, please.
Alderwoman from the 6th will yield to the Alderwoman from the first.
I will.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Um, Alderwoman, ordinance says that you're approving a petition. What does the petition consist of?
I'm sorry?
Um, ordinance 221 says, this ordinance is to, I'm sorry, approve a petition to establish the Community Improvement District. Who signs the petition?
The property owners.
So if there's one property owner, that property owner signed the petition, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so they're signing a petition to tax themselves, is that what's happening?
That's correct.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would remind everyone that when we passed Resolution 33 dealing with incentive reform, uh, last year, uh, this is one of the things that was recommended. It was use community improvement districts to reduce the amount of tax incentives, uh, tax abatement, or, or TIFs on projects. Because tax abatement takes money from a school district, but a CID is just a tax increase on the property, and then they retain that revenue. So, uh, CIDS for projects are actually ways to prevent us from, uh, taking revenue from all the other taxing districts, particularly SLPs. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that fact. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 33 passed unanimously. I'd also like to remind everyone of that fact.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd?
Just, this one has both tax abatement and a CID, so it actually has both.
Uh, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 6th, you recognize the close on 221.
Thank you, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the 6th, seconded by Alderman from the 24th, that we perfect board bill number 221. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? You have to be fast, you have to do it before I put the vote. Opposed? You also have the opportunity to enter it into the general description of your vote if you want your vote noted to be noted. By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderwoman from the 6th and perfected board bill 221.
Next extent of board bill score perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board bills- Board Bills 251, 252, 253, 256, 244, 246, 207, 172, and 210.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading and consent
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second about Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Con. Twenty-two, I vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, third read and finally passage of four mentioned bills. Alderman from the first.
President, I got down that we said 256, which I asked to be taken off, is that?
Absolutely, that's on the regular third reading.
Okay, because that wasn't 256? That wasn't in that package? All right, thank you.
No, all right, thank you. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 248, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement Authorization directing issuance and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue notes for St. Louis Innovation District RPA III redevelopment project Series A, B, and Series C in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $18,400,000 plus cost of issuance and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on third read and finally passage of Board Bill.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we, third read and finally pass Board Bill number 248.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second about Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? Any further discussion? It's 248. All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second about Alderman from the tenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 248. Any, Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Moore, Alderman Howard, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Con. Twenty-two, I vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the.
No, no vote. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, I missed it. Twenty-two, I vote, one, no vote.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventeenth and third read and finally passage Board Bill number 248.
Board Bill 249. Board Bill 249, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance adopting and approving redevelopment projects for redevelopment project area three as described in the amended and restated St. Louis Innovation Tax District. Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, adopting tax increment financing within the redevelopment project area three, establishing the RPA III account of St. Louis Innovation District's Special Allocation Fund and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on third read and finally passage of Board Bill 249.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 249.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second about Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Board Bill 256, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance pertaining to the City of St. Louis Parking Commission and the administration and use of the parking meter fund.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the third read and final passage of Board Bill 256.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for third read and final passage of Board Bill 256.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, this is a simple bill that says if the courts rule in the City of St. Louis favor on the parking commission, then the parking division will be governed under city code, which is chapter seventeen.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the tenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 256. Madam Clerk, there's been a request for, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Con, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Con, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Howard. Seventeen, I vote, four, no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, and third read and finally pass Board Bill number 256.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 251, 252, 253, 256, 244, 246, 207, 270, I'm sorry, 172, 210, 248, and 249.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, affix his First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 232, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, calling state and federal lawmakers to enact common sense gun control measures.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 232.
Can I have the clerk read the resolution?
Yes.
Although I didn't give her fair warning.
Do you have a copy of the resolution? Alderman, would you like to, why don't you proceed talking about it while the sergeant in arms gets her.
So if everyone has a copy of this resolution, again, it doesn't really affect, or at least I would think it would not affect people's sex amendment right to carry. But what it does is, and it's a resolution that I plan to send to the President of the United States, to the governor, to Claire McCaskill, and blunt. It just simply says that even though we have the right to carry, maybe the magazines or the clips would only have five bullets. When you go hunting, you're restricted to three in a shotgun and five. You also have to go through gun safety classes. There's also a little bit of a waiting period. Right now, if I were to sell you a gun, there is no background check. When there's a gun show in town, again, there is no background check. These are simply just, it's a resolution simply asking them to consider some measures to kind of hold back on this. And after it's read, I would like it referred to legislation to further discuss it.
So you want to move.
I do want to move to legislation, but I wouldn't mind if it was read so we can.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we send Resolution 232 to the legislation committee and entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the twentieth, please state your objection.
It's in the packet.
There's a packet of resolutions and it should be in the.
It's kind of buried toward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third. Entertain a second on that motion again, second about Alderman from the twenty-second, that we assign Resolution 232 to the legislation. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, do you have Resolution 232?
Yes, sir.
Please read Resolution 232.
Resolution 232, calling state and federal lawmakers to enact common sense gun control measures. Whereas United States Congressional Research Service defines public mass shooting as one in which four or more people other than the gunman are indiscriminately selected and are killed or injured by the gunman at the same general location and time. Whereas by that definition, the Gun Violence Archive notes the occurrence of 38 mass shooting events since January the first, 2018, one in the City of St. Louis, which have resulted in 101 injuries and 51 deaths. Whereas it is the sentiment of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen that our state, federal and federal lawmakers must enact meaningful, common sense measures to prevent mass shootings and gun violence. And whereas a significant majority of Americans are in favor of such common sense measures, which include without limitation requiring national instant criminal background checks for all firearms transfers even between private citizens, banning firearm accessories designed to increase firearms rates of fire to that comparable to select fire military style rifles, restricting the capacity of detachable magazines to 10 rounds, prohibiting persons under the age of 21 from purchasing firearms and ammunition, requiring individuals to pass a one-time firearms safety course in order to purchase firearms, similar to that hunters in Missouri must pass in order to purchase a hunting license, and establishing a national system of information sharing between law enforcement agencies, mental health care providers, and firearms dealers to prevent perpetrators of domestic abuse, persons with severe mental health concerns that are determined by a mental health care professional to be a danger to themselves and others, substance abusers, and minors from acquiring firearms. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause on our deliberations to appeal to our state and federal lawmakers to enact meaningful, common sense gun control measures to prevent mass shootings and gun violence. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the permanent rolls of this board and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the second day of February 2018 by Honorable Joseph Bacaro Alderman, 23rd
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please proceed with the resolutions, Callan. We've already moved, you're good, yeah, please proceed. Madam Clerk, Resolution 233.
Resolution 233, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an authorizing agreement with State of Missouri for City of St. Louis Airport Police Participation relating to federal old age survivors and disability insurance.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the first read of Resolution 233.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We are in the process of putting everything in place for the airport police officers who are no longer under the Metropolitan St. Louis Police Department and its benefits and rules. So everything here is outlined to now include them with the Social Security Act and all other federal benefits that can be afforded as a regular airport employee.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Would you like to request unanimous consent or would you?
I would like to move for unanimous consent on this Resolution number 233.
Hearing no objection, please. Hearing no objection, please proceed. Make a motion to adopt.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 233.
Moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderwoman from the thirteenth, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
We dispense with line item twenty-two, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday Rules Meeting at ten AM in the Leisure Room. Health and Human Services Committee meeting at nine-thirty in the Leisure Room. Wednesday Housing Meeting at nine AM in the Kennedy Room. Friday Full Board Meeting, ten AM in the Chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the eighteenth. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? President, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, I believe all members were present.
Excellent. You recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Board of Aldermen adjourns until Friday, March second, ten AM.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stand and adjourn.